Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mayall.
No, he couldn't get on.
Councilmember Kareshi. Councilmember Seaman.
President.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
All right, wonderful. So for this evening's council meeting, we are beginning it with a public hearing on our city manager's proposed FY 2018 budget. If you, I have a sign-up sheet for folks who signed up for the public hearing. I will call your name. When your name is called, please come to the podium and you will have three minutes. If you would like to speak on the proposed budget but didn't get a chance to sign up, once everyone who has signed up has spoken, you'll have an opportunity to speak then. If you are here for other public comments on other issues, those will happen later on in our meeting. So right now, this is a public hearing on our FY 2018 budget, okay? And the first person who signed up was Mr. Wayne Sherwood.
Yes.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, city council members, city manager Suzanne Ludlow, my name is Wayne Sherwood, and I've lived on Grant Avenue in Tacoma Park since 1991. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I would like to comment on the proposed city budget for fiscal 2018 as proposed by the city manager. I think it's a very professional document. I congratulate the city manager for her excellent work, as well as the work of the finance director and other staff who have worked on this document. The city of Tacoma Park is very fortunate to have such highly qualified individuals on its staff. Since there's little time to comment on this budget document as a whole, I'd like to limit myself to the following observations. In early 2016, the city council established some new priorities, which included youth success, affordable housing, and paying more attention to populations in neighborhoods within Tacoma Park that have been underserved in the past, especially neighborhoods of high, excuse me, of high racial, ethnic, and low-income concentration. I support those priorities and hope they will be continued in FY fiscal year ahead. The budget document says they will, but it is hard for me to determine how these priorities are actually being implemented in the fiscal '28 budget. Giving something priority in a budget means providing more money for it. We expect that this year ahead is likely to be a very difficult time for state, county, and local governments, especially if Congress approves anything like the kinds of cuts in domestic discretionary programs that have been proposed in the skinny budget by the White House. These budget cuts are likely to trickle down to our area. So I would particularly like to see our city step into this gap in the areas of youth success and affordable housing. I'd like to see funding for youth programs increase substantially, particularly for programs that occur at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. A relatively higher amount of the city's budget should go to the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, which has long been neglected in the past. The city has recently put out a request for letters of interest from developers. The sector plan for that site recommends keeping that site for recreation purposes and says there's a need in the part of Tacoma Park for places where people can come together for community activities and where a variety of community services can be brought in. New Hampshire Avenue needs community activities and affordable housing, not just commercial uses. I also urge the city council to clarify the needs and purposes for the new housing fund that was started in FY '27 with $400,000. I don't see any progress report in the budget on that, and I would like to make sure that that money gets used. I think this is a critical time for us to be stepping in and trying to do everything we can for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Paul Hubner, please. And by the way, if I mispronounce your name, I apologize ahead of time.
Are we on?
Yep.
Good evening. I come, Paul Hubner, I live in Ward 3 on Carroll Avenue, down the street from the Co-op. I come before the council to implore you to return the property tax rate to the constant yield rate. For 16 of the last 17 years, property taxes have been increased in the city, and now with the recent increases in assessments, they will go up even more once again. The difference between the staff-proposed rate and the constant yield rate, according to the board that was up at the open house, is $543,603. So I bring forth two models. The first is the government funds model, which yields an actual, actual surplus, government funds of $462,619 on average over the last nine years. I think a more appropriate one is the all-funds model, where actual revenue exceeds expenditures by some $2.2 million per year average over the last nine years. Lastly, 65% to 82% of expenditures are to personnel costs, and this is wildly out of balance. As one of the property owners who pays income taxes in addition to property taxes, we as a group represent some 55% of total revenue, and it's time we got some relief. Finally, I ask, at the last meeting, I asked that the council members develop some kind of specific idea to decrease the property tax burden and to keep things constant with services. And so I asked that you all each put on the record what your ideas are. Many people come before the council and speak about their ideas. We want to know what your ideas are while you hash it out. I see the CAFRA, the last CAFRA report yielded, okay, 25% of the revenue surplus was due to increased property taxes. So property taxes continue to go up, the revenue continues to go up, and it's a result of increased property taxes. And it's time that we get some relief, because just like the people that we want to help, we need help too. So that's what I have to say for tonight, and I hope you consider it serious.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pat Rumbaugh, and I live at 7301 Maple Avenue. March 15, 2009, I founded a play committee to help encourage people to play. At the time, I had no idea of the time I would eventually put into this effort. I have applied for a couple small grants, a medium-sized grant from the county, and a super-large grant from the MacArthur Foundation. I continue to search for sponsors and grant opportunities. Despite these efforts, over the years, I have only received a couple of small grants. Let's Play America has received individual donations in small amounts, and one business has donated funds. All of our other donations have been supplies, refreshments, and equipment. Performers and leaders at play events are not paid, and they volunteer their time. The council has given, has been given Let's Play America's proposed fiscal year '18 budget, showing in detail the cost of each play event and the overall total cost. I would like to continue offering the city residents four cosponsored play events and four independent play events a year. In order to continue this service, my nonprofit Let's Play America needs to receive $10,000 for operational expenses, plus the current amount the city gives to Let's Play America for equipment, rentals, supplies, which is $5,900. Thank you.
Roberta Hamad?
Hammond.
Hammond, sorry.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Roberta Hammond. I've been volunteering with Pat for about two years, working with her on strategic planning, grant applications, and annual budget. If you look at the fiscal year 2018 budget, you will see that Pat is down for 670 volunteered hours of planning and facilitating time at a value of $26 per hour. If you multiply that by nine years, Pat has donated over $174,000 of her time to planning and coordinating play events for Tacoma Park community. This is likely a low estimate, and the city and its citizens are probably unaware of the level of effort that the play lady has provided towards play events. Looking at it another way, the fiscal year 2018 budget for Let's Play America includes a little over $58,000 in in-kind costs, most of which are volunteer hours, 29% of which are Pat's volunteer hours. In other words, over the years, the Tacoma Park community has benefited from play events that have been largely provided by volunteer efforts. You can see in the budget that operational costs for the fiscal year 2018 are almost $24,000. I'm talking about the Let's Play America budget and how it fits in with, just so people don't get confused. Anyway, almost $24,000. In this budget, Pat is continuing to volunteer her time, but operational costs include $10,400 for a paid part-time intern and over $13,000 for other operational costs. The amount of $10,000 requested by the play lady would go a long way towards continuing the service of providing play opportunities to all diverse and underserved populations in this community. This could be a wonderful opportunity for a deserving student if it were funded, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, council members. My name is Shawanda Oliver, and I live on Maple Avenue, 7777, at Six House Apartments. I've been in Tacoma Park for over 30 years. I am on several committees in Tacoma Park, and I also have been helping with nonprofits, celebrate Tacoma, so forth and so on. Last year, I won the Spirit of Play Award from Pat, Let's Play America. For several years, I have volunteered with several committees, helping out in the committee, informing people of things that happens in the committee, I mean, in the community. I'm also known as the Mud Pie Lady for Let's Play America. That's a big, big thing that we have in play days. So if you haven't made a mud pie, stop by my stand and you'll be glad you did. I help with set up, clean up, participate, and help facilitate at meetings, special events, independent events, and co-sponsor events. I believe play and Let's, and play and Let's Play America's mission, and the request for additional funding is important in helping to maintain and build on events and plan for future FYI 2018, not FYI, you know what I mean? The budget for 2018. Thank you. This is Frank. He's got his nerves on. He'll have to be scared.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Frank. I live on 7600 Maple Avenue.
Can you speak a little louder?
I've been, I've been a citizen for 18 years, and I'm still a citizen now. I volunteered from Miss Pat, the play lady. I've been volunteering for like a long time now, and I love the events that we've been doing. Like, one event that we've been doing, like, every Tuesday, it's called the Playhouse, like, where we, we do play games where, like, senior citizens and people my, people my age, we play card games, board games, and we've been having a lot of events. And with all the events that we've been doing, the citizens have been coming, I've been going, I've been getting to know, like, a lot of people, and I was saying, we need your help. We need your help to invest, like, to help us with, like, equipments and more stuff, because with people, with people my generation, like, they like to play video games, they don't like to get out the house most of the times, and, like, I'm, with my help, with Miss Pat, I'm trying to get my generation of kids to get out the house and play, like, play on the playgrounds like how I used to be. Like, when I was little, we used to play on, like, playgrounds and all the stuff around, and we just need your help. Thank you.
Colleen DePaul?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have a hearing impaired myself, so sometimes I can't tell whether I'm speaking too loudly because my hearing aid picks it up. Anyway, I live at the Victory Tower on what we call Main Street Carroll Avenue, and our community is mainly seniors and people with disabilities. So we have a special sort of community that may make me a little biased on my views on play. But first of all, I want to thank the city and all involved, especially all the volunteers who stepped up to help me enjoy playing all sorts of games, and table tennis is my favorite at the moment, and Kings in the Corner is my card game on Tuesday night when we welcome the community to come in. Anyway, I just wanted to add, intergenerational play is one of the things I think, oh, okay, thank you, is one of the aspects of our playful city that I much admire, and I hope that maybe we can add in the budget some way to, well, the schoolchildren get community service for coming to play with us, seniors, on Tuesday night, and, but I'd like for some of the other volunteers and the operational costs to be covered, too. And I think play has been so important in my specific community and maybe in the wider community, because we have such a diverse community that I really enjoy very much, getting to know people from other cultures and finding out their sense of humor. Thanks for making us a playful city, and I hope we can continue and expand.
Carrie Richer? Richer?
I'm not her, she's here, Mayor Stewart.
Oh, all right. Suzie Stimler? Okay, thanks.
I'm Suzie Stimler. I live on Conway Avenue in Ward 2, and I'm here to request a specific, to eliminate a certain line of the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget. I would ask that the annual budget allocated for invasive plant removal be removed from fiscal year 2018. I've been informed by the Director of Public Works that approximately $10,000 to $15,000 annually has been allocated to spraying seven sites within the city. These are Sligo Mill, Circle Woods, Spring Park, Hefner Park, Forest Park, the hill behind the community center, and Dorothy's Woods. I would ask that this line be removed and that the city immediately stop the spraying of pesticides on those seven sites. And I would note that this is possible. We can do invasives without the pesticide application. The city of Greenbelt in 2011 adopted a resolution stating that their city does not allow synthetic chemicals to be used for invasive plant removal. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Lisa Johnston. I'm Suzie's neighbor at 6718 Conway Avenue. I'd like to second her proposal, asking to remove line items specifically for chemical spraying within city properties, specifically in the parks. Also, a concerned parent, having children who live and play in those woods on a daily basis. We would prefer the use of city money for such things go to better use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amy Watson. I live on Lee Avenue. When I moved to Tacoma Park a year and a half ago, one of the things that drew me to the area was the amazing level of community engagement, from musical events to street fairs to political organizing. The play days put on by Let's Play America have become one of my favorite ways to get involved. From mud pies and box sports to hula hoops and dress up, Let's Play America provides free opportunities for unstructured play to people of all ages and backgrounds. The more I've participated, the more I've appreciated the uniqueness and value of these events. Pat Rumbaugh has a dedicated vision and the ability to inspire people to create spaces where fun seems to happen effortlessly. However, it only looks easy from the outside. I've observed firsthand the amount of time and energy Pat and her volunteers have poured into making Let's Play America a success. The city of Tacoma Park has partnered with Let's Play America from the beginning, and I'm hoping that you'll continue to support the organization. Thank you.
I have Frank on Lee Avenue. Was that, we already went? Okay. And now I have Bruce and Felix. All right, I'm going to pick one. All right, I'm going to say Felix. You go first. Ready? I'm starting the button. You get three minutes. You want to do it, Felix? We practiced.
No?
Nope. All right, then Bruce.
Do you want to do it?
No.
Would you like me to start off?
No. Okay, this is Bruce, and he lives across from?
Circle Avenue.
He lives across from?
Dorothy's Woods.
And in the next few minutes, he'd like to give you?
How many reasons?
Three reasons.
Why you shouldn't?
Spray pesticides.
Okay, and reason one?
Because children could get seriously hurt or sick.
Reason two?
Because they don't have permission.
And reason three?
They could have just pulled out the weeds and other types of bad plants.
Felix, do you want to go? Oh, and Felix wanted you to know he lives, how many feet from Dorothy's Woods, Felix?
Bruce, can you tell that? Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight feet. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce and Felix.
I wanted to thank the city of Tacoma Park and the council members for the wonderful investments you've made in your budget in prior years, in public works and major investments such as buying Dorothy's Woods, doing a beautiful job repairing the sidewalks, and building these really successful bioretention ponds. But I would like to ask you to remove your invasive plant removal line item of $10,000 to $15,000 from this year's budget. Just in terms of my background, I wanted to let you know I have an undergraduate degree in ecology and evolutionary biology, and a master's of science from the University of Maryland in sustainable development and conservation biology. I've lived in Tacoma Park for 15 years, and my family has spent dozens of hours volunteering in Dorothy's Woods to clean out the trash and remove invasives by hand. Our youngest family member volunteering is my son, seven, and the eldest is my grandmother who's here, who's over 70. My husband was shocked to find pesticide application signs in Dorothy's Woods this weekend. I want to be very clear about what our concerns are. First is the issue of lack of notice. We did not receive any advance notice that this would occur, not as abutting property owners, not as residents of the neighborhood, and not as residents of Tacoma Park. Second, this is a heavily populated area right around these woods. As the Public Department Works Department and the city council surely are aware, the property has abutting neighbors who include children, elderly, pregnant women, and pets, who could all be harmed by these toxins. Third, and more broadly, I didn't even know that in the 21st century, the city of Tacoma Park is in the business of buying poison application services and poisonous chemicals and applying these in playgrounds and private and public forests. Let's just be clear about this. Most synthetic herbicides and pesticides are poisons. The cut sheet for Aquanet, which was used in Dorothy's Woods, reads in part, "If inhaled, move person to fresh air. If person is not breathing, call 911 or an ambulance. Call a poison control center or doctor immediately." I just wanted to let you know, I spent about 20 minutes researching scientific articles on pesticides. The class pesticide used is considered now by the World Health Organization a probable cause of cancer. Environmental Health Perspectives Journal, is that my time up?
That's it. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm the elderly grandmother who is just referred to, who's been weeding in the Dorothy's Woods adjacent to my daughter's property. But I'm here to speak for my 11-year-old grandson, who's lurking in the furthest row to the back, hiding behind a book. And here's what he had to suggest that I say to you. "I hope you never again use pesticides on woods in which children aged 5 to 15 help weed the invasives." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does that work? At five foot two, I always have to make these adjustments. Hello. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to participate in real democracy. I truly appreciate it. I am here this evening on behalf of the Tacoma Park Library. As you know, you've all been considering varying options for the library renovation. I feel really strongly, and I will be brief, always a difficulty for a college professor to speak in three minutes, but I will try, because libraries can be, and this one is, the center of the community. And it has a particular resonance for me because I am an immigrant. I lost my accent because I came when I was young. That was the center of our lives, and it is for a lot of immigrants and others. And Tacoma Park serves the diverse community, the library, and I'm going to give you two reasons why I think that's important. Number one, there are about 17,000 residents here. The programs that Tacoma Park has offered in the library have been attended by 17,731 people. Yes, I realize they're not all individual people, but look at that involvement and engagement. They've offered over 300 programs in the past year, not the one we're in now, whether it's book talks, you know about the partnership with Politics and Prose, and that doesn't cost us anything. I mean, that's the kind of entrepreneurship that we'd all like, right? So there's that. There's book talks, and there's the MOOC program. I don't know if you know about it. MOOCs are massive, open, online courses. They're free, they're presented through companies, but they're all free from Harvard, Yale, Princeton, all these big universities. They last about six weeks. You can take a longer one or a shorter one. The gem that Tacoma Park has pioneered is they offer these, and I've taken the one on, excuse me, movies in the 20s and 30s where you got to see the on, excuse me, movies in the 20s and 30s where you got to see the movies as they transformed. There was one on historical fiction from UVA. And then the one that got lots of people, including a gentleman driving in from Virginia, was Ethics for Everyday Life from Yale University. The gem of the library is that we meet once a week on Sundays to talk about it. You're not out there by yourself, you and 5,000 other people in Never Neverland somewhere. So that's one piece. The second piece is, as you know, the community here is very responsive, the library to the community. And in fact, I just discovered a new program that's been offered, which is called Pronunciator, which I haven't seen yet, which enables people to learn another language. It could be English, could be Arabic, could be Umharric. I see the number going down, so I'll go real fast.
No, I'm sorry, Claire. That's it. Everybody gets, I'm sorry.
So I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I wanted to PS, even though, to say, this is not cheerleading. This is reality.
Thank you.
I told you, I was a college professor. How can I say anything in three minutes?
Author David Olson. Thank you, Claudine.
Author David Olson, Hancock Avenue. First, some percentages. At the start of the year, my federal retirement increased by 0.3%. The city's current rent stabilization rate is 1%. From January 2016 to January 2017, the DC Baltimore Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, CPI-U, rose 1.7%. The city manager's proposed budget calls for a 2.3% increase in operating costs, a 4.5% increase in property taxes, and a 67% increase in stormwater fees. Compared to the first three numbers, the increase in operating costs is a bit higher, the increase in property tax revenues is more than double, and the increase in stormwater fees is far higher. I hope the city can cut the increase in operating costs to the inflation rate, relying on the city manager to determine how to do so while recognizing that limiting pay increases may be necessary. Having operating costs that increase faster than inflation is not financially sustainable. More important, while I'm not allergic to tax increases, I believe that in addition to rent stabilization, the city can use tax stabilization. Matching the 1% rent stabilization rate would produce a 54.12% property tax rate. Matching the 1.7% inflation rate would produce a 54.5% property tax rate. Last week, I heard the idea that the city might couple higher property taxes with property tax relief programs for folks who need it. This would be akin to the situation at Harvard. It has sky-high tuition and generous scholarships, and it's a pretty good school. But I'm mindful of the effort to repeal Then Replace the Affordable Care Act. Folks were worried that once it was repealed, replacement would not follow. So if we're going to follow the Harvard model here, please do not hike Then Relieve. Make sure that relief is in place before adopting large property tax increases. Thank you.
Deb Nelson.
Happy National Library Week. Good time to be talking about the library. Yeah, so I'm Deb Nelson. I'm a resident of Maple Avenue and a member of the Friends of Tacoma Park Library Board. I'm also a prof at University of Maryland and a journalist. So I hope you won't mind if I'm quoting a fellow enemy of the American people, Walter Cronkite. He said, "Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation." What better time than now to make a statement about our values here in Tacoma Park through an investment in our community library? A place where people of all ages, economic and cultural backgrounds connect to knowledge, to each other, to the Wi-Fi, and to big ideas. So I want to thank you for everything you're doing already to secure its future for the next generations. And just a couple words to any naysayers, I don't know if there are any, but I've heard a few things. Sure, Silver Spring has a shiny new public library, but that doesn't mean we need, we don't need our community library any more than saying that Silver Spring has parks, so why do we need them? In this so-called post-fact era, we need to be expanding and not contracting our libraries. For those who argue for lower taxes, I feel it, you know? I'm a property owner too. This is not, but this is not the moment to take it out on the library. One other point, I'm a fan of Tim. He's my former neighbor. But his proposal to put this to a referendum is misguided. Consider the added delays, the cost, smaller turnout that favors a few over the whole. As we've seen with Brexit, you know, the populist route isn't always the most responsible way to make decisions that have long-term consequences. That's what we elected all of you to do. And you're doing it in an informed, responsible way with an eye on our taxes and an eye on our future, which, as Walter pointed out, can't be measured solely in financial terms. So thank you.
Thank you. Shirlene Ernst. Sorry, did I get that wrong?
I'm Shirlene Ernst. I live at 7805 Tacoma Avenue. I've lived in Tacoma Park for over 30 years. When I first moved to Tacoma Park, I was childless, and now my granddaughter lives next to me. But what I wanted to say was that over that period of time, the library has been the one thing that I have used at every, every single stage of my career. When I taught in the school system, they were extremely helpful, given their limitations, in helping me with books that I needed for lesson plans when I taught at Blair High School. Now, my granddaughter says that she has, that they have an agreement with the school system so that they, her classes come once a month to get book encouragement, which I'm, of course, delighted to see. Then the myriad activities that you've already, you're already familiar with, really address every age. It's not that, okay, I'm through teaching, so now I don't need the library, so why fund it? Or I don't have kids anymore that I need to encourage, why fund it? You know, now that I'm as old as somebody's grandmother out here, I, you know, love the book clubs, and they have got and have had over the years something for everyone and continue to do so. So all of what I would really like to say is that when you get down to the nitty-gritty of making cuts to, you know, between competing interests and trying to keep the taxes low, I know it's difficult because you just love to spend the money on everything, but I do hope you will fully fund that library expansion because they are a real benefit to the community and they need more space. Thank you.
Thank you. May Kang.
I think I'm going to pass this because I signed up to speak about something else, not on the budget.
Oh, okay. Then you can come back up during public comment. Thank you very much. Philip Kofalas? Okay, you're doing the same. Mary Jane Machui.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Council Mayor. I live in Ward Two, lived in Tacoma Park for like about 35 years. I'm calling because I'm making a little over 27,000 a year take home. My son lives with me, he's disabled. He makes a little over 18,000 take home. We cannot afford these property taxes going up and up and up. Please, you all, people in Tacoma, more and more of this, more and more of that, more and more. You know, there's people like me who still live in Tacoma Park who can't afford the higher taxes. I'm sorry. I'm against the wall now. And I just heard now when, on this stormwater is going up twice as much, that's just something minor, but it means, when you're making 27,000, that's a major thing, making twice as much. And it says here in Aspen and Lincoln, a block from where I live, they're gonna spend $35,000 for a bump out that's not needed. And I hate the bump outs. They're bad for people like me, poor visual depth perception, which a lot of seniors do. The speed humps, I have osteoporosis, and it hurts me to go over some of those speed humps. Physically hurts me, and may cause bone fractures. You all, you know, something like a half of women over the age of 60 get osteoporosis. Think of that. Maybe you're all young, you don't care about them now, but boy, when you get older, you will, probably. And I'm really concerned about the racial disparity in this town, mostly the, mostly the wealthy. I say mostly because I'm not wealthy. White people, and they're moving in now, and they're building the speed humps, and they're doing all this gentrification, which I see in U Street. My friend used to live near Howard University, the same thing, same thing happened, all the bump outs and the speed humps and the white people moving in. And it's, it's just, it needs to be addressed. And I'm glad you're doing some kind of a housing thing, but I understand it's only for middle-class people. I would like people who are always, no, it'll help lower people get a house. Well, I'm glad then. Thank you very much.
Great. Those are all the folks who signed up for the public hearing, but if anyone else now who didn't get a chance to sign up would like to come to the podium and speak on the FY 2018 budget, please do. So this is on the FY 2018 budget. If you have other public comments, they will come later.
Hi. I'm Alice Sims. I live at Carroll Avenue. I wanted to say, a plea for the pool at Pony Branch, is that on the budget?
No. Go ahead. It's not necessarily our budget, but yeah, go ahead.
I'll do it very quickly. I know there are several plans. I've gone to the planning meetings for the pools, for the Pony Branch School, and most of them include the pool, and I love the pool. I've swum in the pool forever. I've lived here forever. I love Tacoma Park. If, you know, keep the pool. It has children, it has seniors, it has people from every nation. You'll be swimming laps, and people will be talking from every country. There's babies kicking in the pool. I love to swim there. It's not like any other pool in the world, and it would be a tragedy to not keep it and, you know, when you have other methods of expanding the school. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Sims.
Hi, Mary Rooker, Larch Avenue, Ward Two. I want to speak quickly about two things, the property tax. The current flat rate is a regressive form of taxation that does not befit Tacoma Park or Montgomery County, or even, I would wager, the state of Maryland. You know, most of us decry attempts to make income taxes be a flat rate because we can see the obvious unfairness. Those with modest homes now pay more than those with the most expensive homes on a ratio basis. So we need to get rid of the flat rate property tax and replace it with a progressive form, much like our income taxes are. And I also rise to support striking the line item for removing invasives. I'm willing to keep it in if you'll insert an amendment that those funds go only to manual invasives removal with no chemical uses. Thank you.
Any other public comments on the FY 2018 budget?
I'm Buddy Daniels. I live at 908 Prospect Street in Silver Spring, formerly of 19 Sherman Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. And I've lived here since 1951. The, that means I'm old. The Tacoma Park Library, and I watched it get built as I was walking to school up at the Tacoma Park Elementary School, the Tacoma Park Library for all these years has been the cornerstone of this city. And as long as I can remember, it has been such an incredible, incredible place to go. And in these times with what's going on, I won't get political, but in these times with what's going on, we need our libraries more than ever because I think many people in this country have forgotten past history and what has happened in past history. And what that library does for this community is incredible, and what I've seen, what that library does for this community is incredible. It's an anchor. So with the proposed expansion, excellent idea, it does need to be expanded, no question, with its tremendous influence on the community and the community's citizens and other citizens. It's amazing to go in there, and I didn't go in there when I was a student, but I go in there now. Terry Siemens is gonna shake his head, "Yeah, that's true." But I go in there now, and it's just an amazing place with an amazing staff, which has just helped me out in a recent project, which I'll speak about in public comments. Thank you very much, and thank you for your consideration.
Hi, neighbors. Good evening. Jesse, did my spreadsheet make it out? Oh, great. Super. I wanted to talk a little bit about our city's plan to finance the library renovation. A 30-year bond is a very expensive way to pay for this project, in my opinion. The current budget proposal would have us pay between $4 and $5 million in interest for a $7 million capital improvement. I'm really in favor of the project. I just, I think there's some other options to pay for it. I realize there's a lot of good reasons to do it for 30 years, but $5 million in interest on a $7 million investment just feels a little pricey to me if there are other options available. Just as a thought experiment, I took a look at a rather extreme position of paying for the library over five years. And you guys have the numbers in front of you, for those of you at home. We could do it for less than $250 per household for a five-year period. That's $53 per $100,000 of assessed value. I realize politically that would be a tough sell, but what does that $300 buy us? It buys us $4 million in interest avoidance. Again, I realize it's pretty out there, but those interest dollars go outside of the community where the principal stays within. Let's figure out how to make it affordable. Let's figure out how to make it more progressive. But interest, that $4 million in interest is real money that we could spend for other things, and I'd ask you all to just think of, you know, let's pony up $300 a year for five years and give $4 million back to all of the taxpayers. And I'm happy to help sell it to your constituents, and I'd be happy to talk to anyone in the audience about it, but thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, is that one, okay?
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Thompson. I live at 419 Elm in Dorothy Barnes's house, the right back of Dorothy's Woods. My kids and lots of other kids play in our yard all the time. We're thrilled to have the asset of the woods there. The deer come through all the time. There are tons of animals who are always moving through, and I would encourage the cutting of the budget, cutting of that line item for the pesticide use. The pests that we're sprayed for don't seem like they're terribly horrible invasives. And so I would hope that in the future, that any sort of pest, integrated pest management plan would be communicated to the citizens in advance, that there would be signs posted, and that there would be more attention to the use of, you know, kids running through there and more vulnerable populations. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Can I just follow on that?
Take your time. Take your time.
This is lesser saladin, the weed that was sprayed for. Hi, my name is Luke Finney. Prior to teaching at Hopkins, which is what I do now, I was a landscape architect, so I know my way around a spec sheet and that sort of thing. So I'd like to second, third, or fourth, or fifth emotion to, you know, cut that line item from the budget and potentially redirect it to, to put in a pitch for the local playfields. They need a lot of work. I volunteer as a soccer coach, so I see them three times a week at least, and I see kids tripping over them. And one of the, one of the great things about Tacoma is that we have a really robust youth soccer program. It's mostly volunteer, and it's multi-ethnic, multi-income, and we work so hard to make these kids feel welcome and to make them feel achievement. And so if we can support those sorts of, that network of volunteer energy... And so if we can support those sorts of, that, that network of volunteer energy by putting our very limited, you know, parks money towards the places where it really needs to be used, rather than the, the sorts of, you know, I love these little yellow things. I know they're invasive, but, I mean, speaking even as a professional, there are worse invasives to be spending our time with. At any rate, sorry to take your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other comments tonight on the FY 2018 budget? All right, then, we'll move on to our regular meeting. We do not have any changes to our agenda tonight. Looking forward.
Public comments or not?
I haven't gotten to them yet. Hold on. So looking forward on our meeting agenda on, we will begin starting on this Monday night, April 17th, with our budget work sessions. This Monday night, we will be reviewing capital projects, so please come watch on TV. During these budget work sessions on Monday evenings, there is, there, we do not have public comment, so this is just a budget work session on April 17th on capital projects. Then on Wednesday, April 19th, here in the auditorium, we have our regular council meeting. We will have a proclamation for National Poetry Month, and our poet laureate will be here to recite a poem. And we have a voting session, a resolution committing the city council to systematically and deliberately apply a racial equity lens in decision-making. That is something that we've been discussing as a city council over the last few months. If you'd like more background information on that, Councilmember Smith and I wrote a blog that's on the city website. We also have tentatively scheduled a resolution providing for appointments to committees. Our work session next week will be a discussion of police chief recruitment, characteristics, qualifications, and process. This will probably be the first of work sessions where we will be discussing this. Then on Monday, April 24th, we have another budget work session, and Mr. Sherwood left for the evening, but this is the evening where we will be discussing particularly council priorities and how they show up in our FY 2018 budget. So to answer some of the questions that were raised tonight about where is affordable housing and youth programs, we will be answering that at that work session. Then on Wednesday, April 26th, we will have our meeting here. We're going to start our meeting on Wednesday, April 26th, with a reception at 7:00 PM for Montgomery College Scholarship recipients. In our budget last year, the city council put in money, $5,000 for scholarships to, for my, students who live in Tacoma Park or attending Montgomery College. And so we'll have an opportunity to meet some of those students, and all are welcome to come at 7:00 PM Wednesday, April 26th. During our council meeting that evening, we will have public hearings on the constant yield tax rate, our FY 2018 budget, and a public hearing on our charter amendment to synchronize our elections. Then our voting session for that night is a first reading charter amendment on our synchronization of our elections, a work session, discussion of traffic, city traffic comming practices and recent projects, and our budget work session that evening will be on budget reconciliation items. Then on Monday, May 1st, and our budget work session that evening will be our overview of departmental and non-departmental budgets and a continuation of our conversation on budget reconciliation. On Wednesday, May 3rd, our work session will be a legislative update from the legislative session that just finished on Monday evening in Annapolis. We'll find out how some of the bills that we worked on did in Annapolis and some things we may have to look forward to next year and that we can get started working on. Wednesday, May 3rd, we will have our budget work session, will be our final budget reconciliation on Wednesday, May 3rd. And I'm going to stop there, because that's plenty, over the next month. Before we turn to public comments, I'm going to ask, actually, I know, and I want to first thank everyone for coming out for the public hearing, and to thank everyone who has raised the issues regarding the pesticide application. I know there may be other public comments on this, so our, our city manager is going to update us on some things that have already started to be put in, in the pipeline to start working on this issue, to update everyone. Oh, do I need to do, how's that?
That looks good. Thank you. Thanks very much. First of all, I appreciate the comments that I've heard this evening and that, many comments that we saw on emails today. The city does not take the use of pesticides lightly, and any that use that is done is done by licensed applicators. No one on our staff is, is licensed, but we hire licensed applicators that are fully trained to do so. Our invasive management program was developed several years ago at the request of residents who were concerned about kudzu, English ivy, and other noxious plants negatively impacting open spaces and damaging trees. And there are seven areas of woods or open space that we currently manage to try to reduce the impact of invasive plants. We're trying to protect the, the trees in these areas primarily. The council has funded this program annually. Today, the discussion that was on the list serves primarily was related to treatment performed at Dorothy's Woods on April 4th. It was not intended. We had our contractor providing treatment in two other locations, Circle Woods and the Sligo Mill-Poplar Mill area. We did not intend for treatment to take place at Dorothy's Woods at that time. That was an error by our contractor. The pesticide that was applied was Aqua Neat. It contains glyphosate, glyphosate, which is the active ingredient, and I can forward to somebody a copy of the product information if they'd like. The actual pesticide application that was done in Dorothy's Woods was very minimal. Two people used a wand to apply very limited amounts of the herbicide directly onto the plant leaves of lesser salinine, multiflora rose, and garlic mustard, which were the plants we were targeting. About one-fifth of the woods area, primarily along the path and the flat area, was treated on the 4th. And as he said, it was not, was not supposed to have been done. We also do manual invasive plant removal, primarily for English ivy, honeysuckle, multiflora rose. That effort is overseen by our Guards Division. They've most recently been working on removing honeysuckle in Spring Park Woods. We're also aware of and support the many volunteers' efforts to remove invasives, like the efforts at Dorothy's Woods, and I see Cindy DiVala here who's helped coordinate that. The Public Works Director has established a public notice process to be followed prior to herbicide treatment. The notification is to include a large sign posted by the city near the entrance to the area to be treated, stating that the pesticides will be applied, providing the timeframe and contact number. Also, a notice will be distributed to each adjacent property, and an email sent to the council member and any known listserv for the area. When treatment takes place, the contractor will apply the yellow sign required by state law that says pesticides applied. We will be adding a project page on the website about invasives management that will describe the areas in the treatment program and that will provide general information. I know there have been discussions about the notice provision. Certainly open to working with the Committee on the Environment or others about how we move forward on invasive management. It is something that is important in our natural areas, and we try to do this very judiciously and carefully, and we look forward to working with folks on that.
Great. And I just want to underscore that I spoke with one of the co-chairs of the Committee on the Environment today, and the public notice, how we do public notice is something that the committee has been taking up and reviewing, and specifically, we talked about the Committee on the Environment reviewing whether or not the committee could take up reviewing our, how we do the pesticide management right now, or do we need to explore the idea of setting up a task force or something like that. So I again want to thank everyone who is here in person and raised this issue, and thanks for the comments that were on listservs today. Before I do turn it over to public comments, I did forget one thing. I wanted to introduce a visitor we have in the back of our room, a representative from Cloud, the Cloud Burst Group. As folks may remember, we have, we are undertaking a housing and economic development strategic, strategic planning for the city, and we have contracted with the Cloud Burst Group, MNL, and Fourth Economy. Is that right? Right, okay. And we're kicking off that process this evening, and we just wanted to welcome our visitor here, and we're looking forward to this process as we move forward. Did you have to say a few words?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you for the introduction and thank you for the, the award of the contract and looking forward to working with everybody. We're really just getting started. I spent about an hour and a half with the mayor today, and we're going to meet with several councilors tomorrow morning, and the city manager, excuse me, spring allergies. And we're just looking forward to getting started. We're just kind of breaking the ice here and, and moving on, but I want to congratulate also the council for being proactive in your economic development visions and affordable housing approach and taking a look at it closely, and we're going to work together with you and citizens and see what we can come up with for a roadmap to the future.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And also, Cloud Burst will be interviewing other stakeholders in the community, as well as staff and the council. All right, back to our normally scheduled programming and our agenda for the evening. Now we will take public comments on voting items. Tonight, we have two voting items. The first is a consent agenda that includes a contract for renovation of the IT server room, a single reading ordinance approving a contract for replacement of a police interview room video system, and a lease agreement for two electric vehicles for Neighborhood Services Team. Any comments on the consent agenda items? Okay, our next voting item is a resolution encouraging Tacoma Park landlords to house refugees. Any comments on that this evening? Okay, now we will turn to general public comments, so it is open.
Just a quick note, my recollection is there used to be at least one and maybe two speed humps, speaking of speed humps, on Ritchie Avenue behind Public Works. Once the road was redone, the speed humps have miraculously disappeared. So what's good for the goose is good for the gander. There must be a reason they got deleted, okay? So my neighborhood's as good as theirs, and I think that, you know, Mary's point should be well-taken. What's that?
You'll talk about that.
The other thing is, my, my remembrance from the open house was that it was going to be a 15-year bond, not a 30-year bond. Is that, wasn't that the thrust of it?
Fifteen years for the 20-year.
Yeah, well, the gentleman was speaking about the four to $5 million cost.
That was for the library.
That was for the library, not...
So that one hasn't even been put out to bid yet, is that correct? You haven't floated the bond yet, correct? But I would presume that you would consider the same 15-year annum as opposed to the 30-year if the, if the cost-benefit analysis had already been calculated, which was my understanding from the open house. Just for that, guys.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening, my name is Mei Kong. I live on 713 Auburn Avenue and have been at, in, living in Tacoma Park for eight years, comparing to a lot of residents I'm new here. And the first thing I found, the first thing I found is that the pool, so I'm here to appeal to keep, try to keep the pool. And I, I, I use the pool about twice a week, and I was surrounded, every time I went, I went, I was surrounded by people of all ages, from toddlers to senior citizens. Actually, she has left, I don't, I don't know her, I'm here to second her. And I, the time when I was using it, I saw, I, I myself was, is an immigrant, and I saw several Chinese old gentlemen who was using the pool, who didn't, who doesn't speak much English. And there, that pool, every time if I go on a weekday between four and five, I would see them. And that was the, probably the routine thing they do, and keep them active, and that's the place they can walk, because they live on Maple Avenue, they can, it's a walking distance for them. So I'm thinking, if we lose the pool, I can drive to Silver Spring and other places to use it. And they will, that population will, will lose an important space. So thank you, everyone, for listening.
Hi, Mary Rooker, still Ward Two. I'm also a proud member of the Montgomery County Green Party and one of the many residents who was active in passing the Safe Grow Zone Act in Tacoma Park and Montgomery County. My neighborhood listserv, like perhaps many of yours, has been all abuzz about the recent application of poisons in Dorothy's Woods, and thank you for that important update. As I understand it, wooded areas are not part of the Safe Grow Zone Act, and the application was legal. If not, it sounds like it wasn't necessarily authorized. So I recommend that the council consider extending the law to wooded areas and any other area within 100 feet of springs or other waters to avoid contaminating the water supply. It's bad enough what they do to the soil. And that the council also consider penalties for the company that applied them if, as the city manager said, if I think, if I heard her correctly, that this application was not authorized. And consider making the default everywhere, no chemicals. Exceptions should be rare. My father once said, just because one can do something doesn't mean one should, and I think that applies to herbicides and pesticides. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Brown. I've been a resident of Tacoma Park for 45 years, okay? I'm here to discuss the stormwater fee. When the stormwater fee began, it was $24. It went from $24 to $48. From $48 to $55. Now, you're asking to go up to $92, okay? I think, well, this is like a, almost a 70% increase. Why is the increase needed? And why an increase of this magnitude? What criteria was used to arrive at $92? The proposal, if implemented, would prove to be a burden on residents of Tacoma Park, particularly our senior citizens, who are living on a fixed income. I'm suggesting that the council reconsider this proposal. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
Buddy Daniels, 908 Prospect Street. I just want to thank the Tacoma Park staff and thank the council. I'm a member of TP Mobilization, and I'm on their outreach committee, but I'm the liaison to COA. What is COA? COA is Communities United Against Hate, Montgomery County. It's a nonpartisan organization that unites our diverse community to combat bigotry, support victims of hate, and promote inclusiveness in Montgomery County, Maryland. And the kickoff event for COA is April 23rd at BCC Bethesda, Bethesda Chevy Chase High School, from 4:30 to 6:30. And what COA is doing is attempting to unite, and we've already united 50 organizations in the county against hate, certainly religious organizations, ethnic organizations, faith And this will be the kickoff event. Brian Froch is the, of course, the Attorney General, the key speaker, and we have a very distinguished panel after that, speaking on hate crimes. After that, there'll be a volunteer fair in BCC's cafeteria where people can meet different organizations. There'll be tables. TP organization will all be represented. Right now, we have about 40 organizations signed up. We're still kind of light on attendance, but again, I know that the council got information about this the other day, and I have plenty of flyers. I've been out delivering flyers, slapped on both my knee braces, and didn't have to do that 20 years ago, but I've been out doing... that 20 years ago, but I've been out doing flyers and blew my computer up today, which my brother-in-law, I hope it's fixing tonight. But word is getting out and if there's any way the council can help get word out even more, it's really appreciated because you know a lot of people. And I'd like to thank you again. And if anybody's interested, you can go to TP Mobilization Facebook home and it's got the information there because you can sign up. We ask people to sign up so we know how many people are coming. But this is a kickoff event and we just need more people to come. I think this is going to be a very important networking organization in the county, networking all of the anti-hate crime organizations in the county, so there's more coordination. And TP Mobilization has been quite helpful and word's getting around, so of you, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Can I start?
Yep.
Hi, I'm Julie Taddio, Ward Two. I just want to follow up with Mary Rooker, her comments about updating the save girl law that was passed four years ago now. I know it's very exciting, we have this new environmental educator and enforcer, I'm going to talk about some ideas with him, but he'll be taking his cues from the council and it really is time to update the registry. There are so many new products now that there's this gaping loophole. Regardless of what the county has done with their own laws, we're still incorporated so our law is separate and distinct. So, I know I requested this last year, I'm requesting it again, I think it's time to update the registry. And periodically, I would say like every four months, not, you know, every three years to remind lawn care workers, because I constantly stop people from TruGreen and Scotts. And in this area, they still don't know about the law and that's their excuse every time there's a violation. And I can't be the one person enforcer, but the more that people know about the law, because a lot of residents are new and they don't know about the law and they're reaching for the roundup. So, I just think it's time and only the council, though, can advise your new person to do some of these changes. So I hope you'll put that on your agenda, because every year that more and more of these products are applied, more children, more pets, more bees, our water, it's all exposed. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments this evening? No? All right, we will turn now to council comments. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to remind people that I am on the Board of Directors of Adventist Community Services of Greater Washington and my wife Joyce also works there. And I say that because I've been asked to advertise a couple of their programs. They have a fundraising benefit concert that's going to be held on Sunday, May 7th, excuse Sunday, May 7th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The general admission is $20 and it's going to be vintage jazz and blues by Esther Haines and folk music by David Olney and Tom Prasada Rayo. It will be at the Northwood High School Auditorium at 919 University Boulevard. You can get more information at the Adventist Community Services website at www.ACSGW.org. And then the other thing that they've asked me to let people know is that they have a computer repair training class available for young adults. It is teaching them all the parts inside of a personal computer, how to take them apart, how to diagnose the computer to see what problems there might be, how to put them back together. And following the training class, successful graduates will have the opportunity for an apprenticeship where they can actually work on renovating computers and preparing them for distribution to low-income community members. Anyone interested in that can also contact Adventist Community Services at 301-585-6556 or go to their website. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, Mayor. One brief thing and maybe this is something for the city manager to check on. It was announced within the last couple of weeks, I believe, that the 911 system was shifting over and that people should start calling 911 even from their cell phones locally here. And I did hear from a few people who tried that and they may live fairly close to the border with the county or with the district, but it didn't quite work yet. So, it sounds like there's still some bugs that need to be ironed out there. And I can pass along, if it would help, an email that describes one particular result and maybe we can check on it.
Please do.
Thanks.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to start off and thank everyone who came out to the community tea this past Friday. It was, the attendance was incredible, it was at Natra's Teas on Erie Avenue. This was the first joint tea with Wards Four and Five and I would like to thank my colleague, Councilmember Siemens, for helping to organize this event. And thank city staff, the city manager was there, members of the police department were there, and of course, our mayor was there. So it was a fantastic event. I want to thank everybody. This was probably the biggest one that we've seen so far in Ward Five. Next thing I would like to mention is on Sunday, I attended Family Fun Day. That's like the kickoff to the outdoor events in Tacoma Park. It is hosted by Washington Adventist University. Day was beautiful, there wasn't a cloud in the sky, the number of people that came out was unbelievable. I've never seen that many people at Family Fun Day. Every event had a line. The music was good. I want to thank President Spence for hosting this event. It first started off as a Tacoma Park event and we handed it off to the university and they're doing a great job. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
A few things that I want to talk to you folks about. The budget is, was front and center here for our open house and it is, thank you so much for, there was a long line of people, I think I, about two dozen people, and that's great. We had an open house last week in which all the city directors were, department directors were at the Zelia Room, ready to roll and talk about the budget as it concerned their particular department, including the finance director, who was there to talk about any aspect of the budget. Unfortunately, we didn't get too many participants from, from the residents, maybe a half a dozen or so over the two-hour period, or seven or eight, I'm not really sure, I couldn't, wasn't keeping count. But I think nevertheless, it was a great success of encouraging the mayor, who's, I think it's your idea to do this, to, to repeat this, we should do this every year. I think as the word gets around, more and more folks will come, because it gives you a chance to ask some of these kind of questions that you just wish you could ask of the people who run the various departments. And this is, it's all set up for that. So let's look forward to doing this every year. I know I spent a long time talking to department directors myself, who I can talk to anytime I want, and I learned lots of good stuff. I had the occasion, again, to visit Don, a private school in, in Ward Six of our, of our city called Don Bosco Cristo Rey High School. It's a small, private school operated by the Sallesian Fathers, has about 400 students and it's been there about 10 years. I know, I'm very familiar with it, I've visited the school many, many times and I know the mayor has, has been there as well as other council members. But people need to know about it. The, the school, its mission is to educate kids from schools who come from poor households. Kids whose, whose family of four earns more than $35,000 a year are not eligible to apply. And that's their mission, is to educate and provide an excellent education. And they do that, 86% of their graduates, and they've graduated six classes over these 10 years, are, have graduated from college, four-year college, or are still in college. And it is the highlight of the school, which makes it really unique, is that it's a work-study program. So four days a week, each kid in high school goes to school, one day a week, they go to do a job somewhere in the Washington metropolitan area. And so they learn how to function in, in the, in the business world. And it's, it's extraordinarily successful. My concern about it, and I spoke to Father Conway, who's the president of the school, is that we need to find a way to get more Tacoma Park children into that school. Right now, the, the school population comes from 53, 53 different zip codes in the greater Washington area. I'd like to, I'd like that there would be more from the city of Tacoma Park. I really appreciate comments tonight with regard to the terms of the library bond, the some of the suggestions we heard and the storm, the concerns about the stormwater fee. I, I just want to say that, and I could speak, I guess, for all of us, is that we're, we're going to be looking at those things and we appreciate your, your comments in that, that direction. It's, it's very helpful. So nothing has been decided on how those bonds will be structured, but it's clear to me that, you know, we, they, we need to have these things taken care of. And finally, I want to say something about our police department's presence every city council meeting in, in this room, every Wednesday, whenever we have public meetings, particularly these, the city council meetings, which are widely publicized. They're here for a reason. I think we all know what that reason is. We, we understand the, the popularity of, that's grown, the fashion in the last 10 or 15, 20 years for crazy people to start, who are angry, to, to start just killing randomly. And sitting up here every day, every week, for however many years it's been, you know, we realize that we're kind of sitting ducks, almost, in a way. So I just want to say that I think I am very grateful that our police department takes the moment, a few moments out of their time to have a person up here to help protect us and you guys as well, everybody in the audience. And it's reassuring to have their presence here and I want to thank all of them who take the time to do this.
Thank you. Great, I just have a couple of updates. I also want to thank the city staff for the open house this week. In, in addition, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, for their comments on the budget and the stormwater fee. There's some very useful information, I think we have handouts here and that are up on the city website, particularly information that our Public Works Director put together regarding the, the stormwater fee. And I know people had raised some questions about the Flower Avenue Street Project. And again, we'll be delving deeper on those capital projects on Monday evening. In addition, I just want to also thank Natra's Tea House on Erie and Flower for the tea we had on Friday. It went very well and I hope people get a chance to pop by there and enjoy that. So, this evening, we are having a presentation of the Piney Branch Elementary School feasibility study. I want to thank the residents who've come out to speak on behalf of that. I'd like to put a plug in, please. The city council can weigh in on and suggest and provide our preference on the feasibility study, our feedback, but this decision is going to be made by our superintendent and at the county level. The city actually does not have final decision over whether the pool stays or goes or what design ultimately gets picked. While we can, you know, ask questions and provide some feedback, that decision, that ultimate decision is not the city councils to make. So, I would urge residents to also, you know, contact their county council member and the superintendent as well, with feedback regarding the feasibility study. So, and I just want to say before folks leave tonight that I'm very thankful to the group that's here and stayed through all our public comments and took time out tonight to specifically provide the city council with a presentation on this. So, great, all right. We will move on then to our city manager comments. I did not forget tonight.
You came close. Thank you, I'll be very brave.
Oh, our, all right, our city council member, Tim Mail, is on the phone.
No comment, I want to let Suzie go, but I just wanted to let you know that I was online.
Great, we're glad you could join us.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up about the timing on the Sligo Mill Overlook Playground. Councilmember Kareshi had asked for an update on the status of that. We're awaiting receipt of a permit for the sediment and erosion control permit from Montgomery County and the contract approval by Park and Planning. We anticipate construction will begin this summer and I understand the contractor's ready to go, so it shouldn't be very long and the information is kept up to date on the project directory page on our website. Also, wanted to give an update on the dog park. It sent a heads up to the council members after the major storm last week. During that heavy rain event, we discovered that water runoff went under the rocks below the turf, so they avoided the channel they were supposed to go into. The water had its own mind and so it did create an uneven area on the hill, which has now been roped off and then fenced off. And we did address the issue, the runoff issue, yesterday, but we need to kind of relay the turf and so that'll be another, probably next week, by the time that's completed. The, the dog park is still available, but just one area is fenced off. I have information in my city manager comments on the Homestretch Program, which is one of the things that we are, we're kind of moving forward with, with affordable housing funds. This is, to date, we have 22 families have formally expressed interest in participating in the program. This allows, it's designed to provide financial assistance to eligible individuals and families exploring homeownership. And we've got, 13 people have submitted full applications for assistance. The Homestretch marketing campaign will officially kick off in May with a first-time homebuyer sentiment are scheduled to take place here at the community center on Saturday, May 6th. There's a few slots left still for that. So people should go on the website, look up the Homestretch Program and apply and follow up. We're looking forward to, I'm so glad that we've got a good reception already of interest. Similarly, we had good turnout for a informational meeting on the Tacoma Park Recreation Center Solicitation for Letters of Interest. And we had 17 people representing 12 firms attend. Also, we had, in attendance were representatives of the Friends of the Tacoma Park Rec Center and the Montgomery County Department of Housing and Community Affairs. The deadline for the submissions of letters of interest is Monday, May 22nd. And again, information's on the website about that program. You introduced the, the cloud burst folks. We do have our Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan process underway and I know there's already meetings scheduled, you, I think the mayor had one today. And we've got other council members scheduled for tomorrow. The firm's first deliverable, which is the Housing and Economic Analysis Report, is scheduled to be completed in late May. So we're looking forward to moving quickly on this. And again, we have more information on the website. I think, you know, part of, as we go through the budgeting process, we have money set aside for a variety of things that we think will be following up on the recommendations of the plan. So that's all I have for tonight.
Great. All right. We'll go to our consent agenda this evening. Would someone like to move the consent agenda? Councilmember Schultz, would someone like to second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Smith. There is a single reading ordinance, so the clerk called the roll, correct?
Correct. Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah.
Councilmember Mail?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kareshi? Councilmember Siemens? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Hi.
You didn't say me.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
And did Councilmember Siemens say something?
Hi.
Hi, okay.
All right. Good.
He actually said hi.
All right, our next voting item this evening is a resolution... Our next voting item this evening is a resolution encouraging Tacoma Park landlords to house refugees. Councilmember Kovar provided some suggested edits to this. Is this in the packet that the public has as well, or?
It is not, but I have copies.
All right, if anyone is interested, Councilmember Kovar, would you like to identify the changes you suggested?
Yeah, thanks.
Oops, I need to turn you on, I'm sorry.
Am I on?
You're on.
Two main points. One, there's several people and groups in the local area who have been working, and I've had an opportunity to be involved in it to a small degree, on helping some people who have been granted asylum or who are seeking asylum. And I know it's kind of a technical thing, but the standards for the granting of asylum are the same as the standards for the granting of refugee status through the federal program, which is that you have a well-founded fear of persecution if you were to return to your home country. The main difference is you get asylum when you're already here in the country, and you get refugee status when you're not, and when you're outside the country. And so, I thought it would make sense to include those who've been granted asylum or who are seeking asylum, both statuses, which also do enable you to remain here in illegal status while you're going through the application process. So, there's a two or three changes in there that just add that, which I think is important. And then, the second piece, which is at the end, and is focused on something that we did talk about when this last came up, and I don't know to what extent this fully addresses it, but one of the questions was, should we pass a resolution, which is important and makes an important statement, that we want to encourage landlords to rent to those who are refugees? And leave it at that, or do we want to provide some way of, through the city, providing incentives or other, other steps that are more than just mere encouragement, not that that's bad for that to happen? And so, the language that I suggested is to direct the city manager to explore options for providing financial assistance through our Housing Reserve Fund. And I, and I just want to note, so that's something that could happen down the road. I know that we're not going to be getting into any of the specific details on how the Housing Reserve Fund would be used until after the completion of the, the Cloud Burst report. This is not in some way to put any assistance for refugees, or if landlords are able to help them, above anything else that we might want to do. There's been talk about some other ways of utilizing that money, and this does not require or in any way constitute the adoption of a new program. It just says, this is one of the things that the city staff should look at. So, I did circulate that earlier. I know a lot of people may, on, on the council, may not have had an opportunity to look at it, but I think it would help ensure that the resolution is slightly more than just a very important but nice exhortation, and actually could move us down the road toward getting some valuable assistance in this area.
Thank you, Councilman Kovar. Before I ask to have this moved, does anybody have any clarifying questions or points to make? No? All right, would someone like to move this?
Move it.
Councilmember Siemens, second?
Second.
Councilmember Kovar, any discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, and then pass. Oh, oh, Tim, you're in. Sorry, can you say that again, Tim?
Yes, I support it.
Yes. Aye, all right. Now, we're on to our work session, Piney Branch Elementary School feasibility study.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Hill. I'm the Assistant Director for the Division of Construction for Montgomery County Public Schools. On January 31st, 2017, we kicked off the first of four work sessions for the feasibility study for Piney Branch Elementary School addition project. The feasibility study process is a very broad and general study of ways to make specific assessments of our current facilities. During the process, we tried to explore all viable options for solutions. The study is designed to be a collaborative process between school staff, the community, as well as the parents. As work sessions progressed, multiple options were proposed, explored, reviewed, and either discarded or kept. At this time, I'm going to turn the review over, or the results of all four of those work sessions, to our architect, Mr. David Fisher, who will walk you through the results, and he will be followed by Mr. Gary Mosesman, our team leader for project management, to wrap up next steps and answer any questions that you may have.
Evening, everyone. As Veronica mentioned, my name is David Fisher, architect with Smolny and Emmerilkovich Architects. We're hired by Montgomery County Public Schools to look into the feasibility of adding about 6,000 gross square feet, or net square feet, rather, to enlarge Piney Branch Elementary School right, right next door, if anyone wants to take a look when we're done here tonight. So, this is actually a presentation we gave to the PTA a couple weeks ago, just to recap exactly what had happened, give everyone in the school community kind of an update of where we stand. And we were invited here tonight to give, give the presentation for the city council here, so thank you very much for that invitation. As was noted, this was a collaborative process. We went through four different work sessions, starting at the beginning of the year, coming through March. And so, as I mentioned, what we were looking to do was to find a way to add the 6,500 net square foot to the building in order to increase capacity of the school for potential future growth down the road. Since this is a very small school site, kind of hemmed in, there's no room for portable classrooms next door. So, to get ahead of potential enrollment increases, we want to make sure that there's a plan set to, to make sure there's space for students that may come in the future. So, as everyone knows, our elementary school is right next door here on Maple and Grant Avenue, backing up to the Tacoma Piney Branch Local Park, with that nice hill back in between. Our school is actually right up against the property lines, and that hill is owned by Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission, is part of the park. So, a quick recap of the existing building itself that we went through in the first work session to make sure everybody was on the same page. Our public programs are on the ground floor, and moving up, we have our educational classrooms and special programs kind of around a central media center. An interesting feature of this school is really the split-level nature of it. So, the media center, if you were to go next door, is kind of a half-level down in between the two different levels where most of the classrooms are. So, it's not really optimal for any students who are mobility impaired to kind of go up and down between classrooms to get to where they need to go. So, these were some sections we prepared for the community to show that split-level nature. You can see the cafeteria is kind of a story and a half, and the media center is a story and a half. This was built at the time when split levels were, were very amped. So, at that first meeting, we also presented some potential locations where we saw opportunities for expansion, really looking at the existing corridors, how the circulation worked in the building, and where we could potentially tee off from those circulation paths. And those were the six locations we found. And, and really, this first work session, we didn't bring any, any concepts. We wanted to open it up to the community to get input on, on what everyone's priorities were for, and possible addition, what kind of goals, what things could be improved as we look to, to do some work at Piney Branch Elementary School. So, this is what we found. Accessibility was a concern. Getting students from the cafeteria down at the ground floor all the way up to those playfields, logistically was a problem, and really, for accessibility, Americans with disability act compliance was a problem. There was also a lot of support from the community members to, to keep the pool. This was a community asset that's there, and if at all possible, we really wanted to maintain an asset for both the community and also as a school for educational use, even though it may not necessarily be a part of the curriculum, it's something that's there and can be used. You know, heating and cooling, obviously, is very important, making sure people can get from point A to point B, and connecting with outdoor spaces, trying to find someplace to bring students outside, were all issues that also got brought up. And there was also kind of noted the fact that the school right now shares a bus loop and a parent loop, which is something that the school system is trying to move away from for safety concerns, to try to separate so that we don't run into any potential issues with people having to cross traffic to get into the school. So, as Veronica mentioned, we, we went through and provided some potential concepts through the four, the four work sessions, kind of narrowed them down and fine-tuned them. So, the first concept, we looked into, looked at going into that field at the back. So, the hill and as well as the little plaza that connects the hill, connects the school across the hill to the field. So, with this concept, we were really looking to essentially tear out that hill to provide additional parking for staff, for visitors, and utilize that space to do an addition for all of the new program. That would be at level with the play fields, so that students could walk directly out from the school to the fields with windows looking, overlooking the fields. I mentioned taking out that hill to provide parking, as, since that hill is owned by the Maryland National Capital Parks Planning Commission, in our coordination efforts with them, they noted, you know, possibly transferring this land in exchange for providing parking that could be used by the park, connected to an accessible route, the nice new curved pathway that you all built a few years back on Grant Avenue. So, that was something that they saw as a benefit to them, that would make it reasonable for them to donate land to the school system for that purposes. So, you can see our little parking lot would then kind of be below, two stories below the addition. Second option we looked at ended up getting cut, looking to add into the two corners in the front on Maple. The third option, concept C, utilize one of those front corners on Maple, as well as the plaza connecting the school with the fields. So, in this option, the ground floor, we wouldn't really be adding anything, everything would be up a little. In the, the bottom-left corner, we'd be adding an elevated addition, as well as infilling that plaza in the back with some program. And then, the second story for the addition in the corner above the parking lot in front, and then, building a bridge at the top level, again, to bring us directly out into those playfields. That's something that's constant through all the concepts that were provided, because that really seemed like a priority for a lot of the stakeholders here. Concept D, this one, utilize the pool volume and that plaza that we were talking about. So, we did want to include one option that looked at utilizing the pool space, just really show that all potential feasible options had been investigated as we moved this forward through the review process, the superintendent, the board of ed, and the county council. So, in this option, we actually are removing half of the pool volume in order to create some outdoor space, which currently is at a premium on, on this very small site. And then, the rest of the pool and the locker room volume would be turned into a suite for the arts program, to be more accessible to outdoor spaces, music a little closer to the performance space and the cafeteria. And then, the, the second floor would be added into that volume space of the pool for more classroom space. And again, adding that in the bridge out to the playfields. Concept E was another option that also looked at using the pool, but through the process, that was eliminated. And then, our final concept, concept F, looked at utilizing roof space on top of the pool and the gymnasium. And kind of looking at the structural design of the existing building, we were somewhat lucky in that the building was designed to support additional load on top. Currently, right now, if you look at the picture in the bottom-left corner, you can kind of see that there's already some classrooms on top of a bit of the pool volume and on top of the gym volume. So, utilizing that, we were able to add a cluster of classrooms on each side to kind of not impact the footprint, but really take advantage as best we could of a, of a very small site. And again, we wanted to make sure connection to the field, so another bridge. So, as part of this, a part of this feasibility study, we also wanted to look into, how could we address site circulation issues on, on our postage stamp site here? So, this was kind of broken out into an appendix, because the site concept that we came up with really could work for any of the building concepts that we just presented. It could be done independently, if, say, there was a separate funding source that wanted to just improve circulation on the site. So, just a quick recap, kind of zooming out, so you get a better sense of what's going on here. Here we have our existing site, and you can see how we're next to the city hall here, next to the park, and also very close to the elementary school, which shares the same bell times, the same arrival and dismissal time for students. So, it can get a little congested in this part of town in the morning, as I'm sure you all know. So, here's kind of the base concept that we're showing with the parking lot out at the back. If we are to leave the existing roads as they stand now, that parking lot we were looking at at the back would have to be accessed from the parking lot for this building right now. Since Grant is a, a one-way street going down towards Maple Avenue, the only access point would be from Philadelphia through the parking lot, which, you know, isn't quite optimal. We don't necessarily want too much traffic zipping through one parking lot to get to another parking lot. So, what we are proposing as a potential option here is to modify Grant Avenue, so that there is two-way traffic on it from Maple. So, we would allow people to come in, drive up to Maple, to a, a small little loop at the end of the cul-de-sac there. You'll notice the parking lot from the town hall here actually would be dead-ended, it would not connect to Grant Avenue. That was something that was brought up in our meetings with the city council staff members, kind of noted that sometimes people drive a little too fast through this parking lot, and with students coming from Tacoma Park Elementary School, Piney Branch Elementary School, and the library, as well as the community center that's within this building, that's not so desirable. So, in this option, we would look to maintain the current bike path, maintain the current basketball court, which is very well-used, and try to widen some of the sidewalks as well here, because this is a major pedestrian route. So, that's kind of where we ended up with, with four different options, three of which maintain the pool, one of which does use the pool volume, as well as one additional kind of standalone option to look at tweaking Grant Avenue a little bit. So, right now, we're compiling everything into a report, which will be submitted to the superintendent schools, as mentioned. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Mosesman to talk about where we're going from here. Thank you all very much for having us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Gary Mosesman. I'm with Montgomery County Public Schools. I'm the facility team leader of design, and I've been involved in the project, attending all the meetings, the work sessions, and, and receiving all the emails also from the community members, so my email is burning up. But I think, you know, the architect, Dave Fisher, and the Smolny and Emmerilkovich Architects did a great job of responding to the community and hearing input from those that came to the committee meetings, as well as the emails that we received. And from this point, I think it's been stated that with what we've received now, we're able to put a cost to this, to the options, and we can then present that to the superintendent and to the board, and they can fund or make appropriate actions to move forward with the project. But of course, this is also at the time where we're reassessing the whole CIP for the projects. We're coming up to what we call an on-year, where we look at the CIP, and as part of this process of looking at the growth at the school, we're also looking at what, what is the potential growth, and where are we really at with that potential growth? And that's stated in the CIP, that that would be reevaluated at the same time. So, we're kind of having a convergence of that at the same time when this report arrives to the board. So, if the project is still, let's say, staying on the same path, it would go into now planning, which is appropriated for fiscal year 2019, and then, we would start again with the design process and looking at the opportunities that we have here to add on to the site. At that time, the design would then continue on into construction documents, permitting, and then ultimately into construction, possibly in fiscal year 2020, and then with completion in eight, August of 2021, if the project is approved and does move forward. But like I said, that is all under assessment. We do have several other factors that are in the mix, one of which is a new down-county elementary school, which is also being assessed for sites that we're looking at, which have an, would have an impact on this project also. And then, as well as that, at the same time, we have a assessment of our revitalization and modernization project, or, excuse me, revitalization and addition project that also is coming out here in the next couple of months, that is reprioritizing schools, and Piney Branch Elementary School was one of those schools on that list. So, we're kind of caught with three different things kind of converging at So, we're kind of caught with three different things kind of converging at one time. So, how that all kind of shakes out at the end, we'll see here soon once the board gets the information out. So, with that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Great. I have a question on, when you talk about the reevaluation that'll happen soon, what did they find we are actually getting more students than they thought moving forward? Would we go back to these plans or?
So, I would say at this point, the determination on the growth, we know that we're getting quite a large amount of students that are coming into the area, and that's what we're trying to get ahead of here. This project actually doesn't fall under our standard criteria to add on to a school. We're trying to get ahead of just in case, and this was before all the other issues became obvious, is that, you know, we were trying to get ahead of this additional growth because we don't have space here to add portables on. So, during that assessment, that is one of the things that we do look at, and will be looked at, is what is that growth? We are looking at the growth and the amount of growth and what that impact is on the decision of opening up a new school, modernizing schools. That's all in the factors that are going to be determined.
Great. And you know what other four sites they're looking at for another down county? You forgot to bring it.
No, no. I haven't written down. It's publicized. It's 9500 Burnett, which is the parks, they're moving out of there to their new facility. Forest Grove Site, which is right across from the hospital. Elm Avenue, which is here downtown, if I'm not mistaken. And then the Silver Spring International Site, the park site up in Silver Spring. Those are the four sites that are being looked at.
Great, thank you. Ms. Lethal, do you have a question or?
Yeah, I was just curious about the timing on when the financial information will come out.
So, that will come out with the report, and once the report goes to the board, we do make that public on our website.
About when would that be?
June.
June, okay, thank you.
Approximately June.
Great. My, any other colleagues have? Councilmember Schultz?
Excuse me, you mentioned Elm Avenue site. What Elm Avenue are you referring to or?
I believe that's the school that is, it's a private school that's closing.
Oh, the John Evans Andrews? Okay, thank you. I was thinking that might be the case.
You missed my kids. I live down the street from there. Anyway, oh, Councilmember Kovar, sorry.
Yeah, I agree on keeping the pool and using the space out back, so thank you for that. One of the questions that a number of the neighbors have asked me about, and it looks like it's off the table, but I just want to get a confirmation about that. The other part of Grand Avenue, which comes from Piney Branch down to where the little berm is in the dead end, is that under consideration still for potentially being used? Because I think that would be, for me, that would be a mistake because that, the students just walk down that from the middle school, and it would be quite dangerous. And a narrow street, too.
At this point, it's been removed from the table. I think that the architect has come up with another plan, and that was working also with the city staff on opportunities that generally aren't things that we would take under consideration, but I think the city was willing to work with us and, in doing so, gave us additional flexibility in how we access the site.
So, even for access for that new parking lot in the back, that would either be done by the repurpose grant or?
That would come off.
Off of Maple, yeah. The part that would switch to two lane. Okay. That's all I had.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Appreciate you taking the time to do the presentation, and thank your colleagues for coming this evening. So, when you make the recommendations to the superintendent, do you guys tell him, Dr. Smith, what you think is the best proposal? Are you agnostic? And let his staff run through all the recommendations and try to figure it out?
Sure. We provide the information to Dr. Smith in a report, and if he needs, if it requests any additional information or follow from us as the staff, we'll be more than happy to provide it to him, but we don't provide any preferred options in any of this. What we're looking at really, trying to arrive at, is it feasible to add on to the school? And if so, what are those costs associated with it? And that's really what the feasibility study is, is not setting a preference or determining what the scope of the project as far as which options we're going to select.
And if you guys went with a new school on Elm Avenue, you would raise that current school and build a new school, correct? You would not try to retrofit that?
Sure, yeah, that school is not going to meet the capacity that we would have to provide for.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Mail, I just wanted to double check, see if you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Let me just, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Let me just put a sort of couple of questions and comments on the table in a row, and then if you could just respond to this because I'm revoked, it's a little bit easier to do it that way. So, let me go through these three things. The first is that you had mentioned, or someone on the staff during one of the meetings with residents had mentioned a, another potential project for that school, which is, for the Piney Branch School, which is a future renovation of the building. And it came up during the context of talking about the different options and, you know, doing an option that would have the most sort of separate footprint from the current school building, which would maybe make the future rehabilitation work or renovation work go easier. So, if you could just provide any information on that, that's my first point. The second point is, when you deliver your report to the superintendent, is it possible for you to, just as long as the city council or the city staff know when that transmittal has happened, that would be, that would be really helpful? And then the third point is, if you could just clarify for us just a little bit, between the process of you delivering the report to the superintendent, superintendent working with the school board, and then the school board and the county council, county executive, you know, can you just sort of quickly summarize, in some ways for the record, but also for my benefit, and maybe for my colleagues that don't know, so what are the key moments in there where there's decision-making? Obviously, when the superintendent receives your report, that's one piece, but then, you know, are there decisions sort of all along that path? So, I'll just put those three questions out there, and let me know what you think.
Okay. Again, so the first one, the potential project renovation, that was part of the FACS reassessment, and that's part of the Montgomery County Council Office of Legislation and Oversight had requested that we relook at how we prioritize our schools, and that report is coming out here in the next month or two, if I'm not mistaken. I don't count, quote me on that 100%, but I believe that's the deadline for that report. And that's where you're talking about the addition, addition and modernization, or, excuse me, renovation in addition to the facility as opposed to just the addition only. So, that's the first question. The second one is, the report, we'll be more than happy to let you be aware when we will be submitting the report to the superintendent. Once it's made public, we'll be more than happy to inform you and send you a copy or a link, or however you would like a copy of it, we'll be more than happy to coordinate that with you. And I guess the process at this point is, once the report is finished, finalized, as noted, it goes to the superintendent. The superintendent makes his recommendation to the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed then looks at all the projects that they have in the basket, and they determine what they can and can't fund based on what they're determining and what their priorities are. And I think part of that process will be this evaluation and renovation process, as well as the down-county new elementary school, that's all going to go into the mix. And then the board will then present that to the county, request funding from the county, and that's when that funding will be appropriated or not appropriated, or funded or not funded, and that's where those processes happen. I can't tell you what those dates are, I don't know those off the top of my head, but I can be more than happy to get back to you on that.
Thanks. Just one sort of clarification, when the Board of Education is sort of considering what to do with that, I assume that would just sort of generally happen during a series of open meetings before there's a budget submittal, sort of in the middle between budget processes? Is that sort of generally correct?
I believe so. I mean, I would have to get back to you on that to give you a real definite answer, but the board meetings, most are the public meetings, they do go through budgets, they do go through projects, talking about projects. So, I, but as far as, you know, what involvement during those open meetings are, I can't really address that. I can get back to you there.
Okay, but thank you. And just let me close by saying thank you for the series of meetings that you all held and the level of participation you brought from your staff. I thought it was, at least for the time I was able to spend in those meetings, I thought it was just really well done and really appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Just wanted to, just a couple of things to add to what Councilmember Mail just said, is that the mere fact that the Board of, Montgomery County Public Schools was willing and able to devote so much time to meeting with the residents concerned about this one school, and of course, the indoor pool, I think is really impressive. I'm impressed by that because it's really, the pool, you probably understand by now, is just really, really valuable. I mean, it's the only wet thing we've got in Tacoma Park that's open to the public. We don't even have a fountain to jump in yet. So, losing that pool would be a big challenge for many of the youngsters, minority youngsters in particular. But having said that, and the other comment is, the observation is just, it's very clear that you have a lot of balls in the air that are all going to, sort of coming down simultaneously as a juggler, and that's, the fact that you can even begin to answer some of these really salient questions is pretty good. I realize that it's a very complicated process. I was interested in the one concept plan that showed dead-ending the parking lot that serves at the back of this building. Because as it is, there's certain times when we now do not have sufficient parking for all the patrons of this building. And closing that off terminates a circulation flow, which is clockwise around the building for traffic, enforces all traffic, virtually all the traffic accessing the building to not only come in off of Philadelphia, but to exit onto Philadelphia, which certain times of day is difficult. So, I don't know how many parking spaces would be lost, but losing very many would be difficult. This, I'm probably not saying anything to you that our city staff hasn't already commented on. I don't know what they may have said. It's just an observation on my part. But obviously, you need to get access to the proposed parking at the back of the elementary school, so I see the dilemma.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to be?
Well, I mean, I think part of the process or the concept is that that parking lot that's going to be on the back would be available for the city's use also. So, after hours or in the evenings, that back extra parking spaces that we're trying to keep the cars from crossing the pedestrians, which was a really, a big outcry from the community about the crossing of students coming from the middle school, coming from the elementary school. And, you know, that's one of the big reasons why the Grant Avenue, connecting Grant Avenue was dismissed, was that concern? And so, I think this actually improves that process, that creates a greater separation. And the benefit for that, I think, outweighs a few parking spaces that we may lose. But like I said, that you're losing them here on this side, you're picking up plenty of more parking spaces on the other side of that parent drop-off.
In that respect, or in respect to any of the four remaining concepts, will we have as a city council, and I'm aware of the fact that we're not the final decision-makers, have another opportunity to sort of hear the progress from you guys?
Sure. Once the plans are, if they're approved and move forward for planning, we will be back here, we have to be back here.
Look forward to it.
And we will definitely be talking to you again.
Thank you for your work on this. Appreciate your time here tonight.
Right, Ms. Magic?
Just wanted to follow up on that. Grant Avenue is our street, and so, there would be a point when we'll have coordination and have discussions, and there'll have to be some actions by the council on changes to how Grant Avenue works. You know, one of the things that we emphasized in speaking with the staff from the school district is that we do like thinking and working together, recognizing we've got multiple schools, our facility here, it's nicer if we can design and coordinate together. And so, you know, I appreciated that they were open to having those discussions and not just looking at where their property line was. And I think, you know, yes, it'll have to come back to you because there'll have to be some approvals that you'll give on that, if that indeed goes forward. But I like the general process that we're thinking about this whole area as a campus.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine.
Since we have you here tonight, and you've already waited so long, could you tell us a little bit more about the process on the, looking at the four sites for the down-county elementary school and where you are in that?
So, we are just starting our research on those property. We have an architectural firm that is looking into the four different sites, coming up with concepts that we're vetting through to see how, if it meets our programmatic requirements. Those four sites will be studied, we'll look at, you know, everything from circulation, capacity, growth. We'll also look at cost at all four of the locations, and then, well, there'll be an open community meeting actually on that. There'll be a series of work sessions where we're inviting, and you'll be invited if, obviously, but, because it doesn't have a direct effect to you. But it's going to be kind of an open, I believe, I don't know if this is going to be a roundtable or? I believe a roundtable discussion about those sites.
May.
May.
Great. Terrific. And I would just put a, to follow up on what the city manager said, the Elm Avenue site where the JNA school is, you probably know this, but it abuts a city park right now. It is an odd footprint for that location, but we would, as we collaborated on this, love to continue talking to you about that location.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. And I just want to say, as my colleagues have, thank you for the work on this, the meetings I was able to attend. It was, I think, really well-run and bringing in the community input, we very much appreciate it. And I just want to say thank you to Ms. Hill for kicking this all off and bringing together the community, and you all coming to us and planning this out together. So, we very much appreciate that, and I look forward to working with you more on this and seeing how this develops. So, thank you, and thank you so much for, we never know exactly how long public comments are going to be, so.
I ate before I came.
Good. Thank you all. Have a nice evening. Thank you. We're going to take just a 10-minute break before we do the library. So, if the folks for the library want to come on up. So, if the folks for the library want to come on up. I just need a break.
Wait, I am...
I'm on.
You're going to turn the microphone.
I don't see you. Wait. There you are. It needed to be so.
Okay, now she's on.
Do I need to move?
You're good.
You're good.
Nope, I got you.
I'm good.
Okay.
Should I?
We're starting.
Yeah.
See, nothing after 10 o'clock.
Yes, we're, we're tired.
Okay, I just wanted... Thank you. I just wanted to give a very brief update on, give you an idea of where we are on the library renovation plans. As you know, a bond bill request was made recently and was approved by the state legislature, and we're very happy about that. Informational brochures, we're prepared for that presentation. And subsequently, we've turned them into, we've modified them a little bit for purposes of general publicity. And we're sort of making them available to the public. They talk about the library, the users, you know, the numbers of programs we do and so forth, basically the role we have in the Tacoma Park community, shows pictures of the current library building and the most recent concept designs for the new library, just to give a kind of snapshot of where we are and where we could be in the 21st century. Most recently, a topographic utility and boundary survey was prepared by the Luke Meyer Partnership. This was in January, and it shows existing conditions of the relevant parts of the building, flood walls and so forth. It is on the project page. It can be seen there. I also have print copies if anybody wants them, that, you know, probably on the project page, you can enlarge it. We don't yet have an impact analysis, so we don't really know how this might affect costs going down the road. There is a relocation committee that's been of library and city staff. With Jason, we've been meeting for several months, trying to find, figure out where we're going to locate services and staff, programs, circulation, all those things, with the desire to keep everything as close to the present location as possible, so we don't lose our, our users, our current users. And so, we've been talking about this for a while. And some of the spaces that we have come up with as possibilities, we have talked about the possible leasing of JNA School when it closes. For books, this would be the first floor where there's quite a bit of space. We've visited a, a couple of times. This would be for books that would be on shelves and actually be retrievable. This would be where most of the collection would reside during construction. So, we could send staff, a staff person there as often as once a day to get retrieved books and other materials that people wanted. And we would also, I think, probably have to provide a very limited circulation service there. I think those might be the terms of, you know, leasing it, if that all works out. So, that's, we're very hopeful about that because it's such a large space and it's pretty close to, it's pretty close to where we are now.
When she says the circulation thing, this is where the public could also go.
Yeah.
Right. But we'd also preserve some circulation somewhere here in the community center. We're not sure exactly where, possibly, possibly in the game room, or the game room could also be used for computers, leisure reading, wireless use, that kind of thing. There's also been talk of having a double-wide trailer in the Sallyport or in the basketball court, which would actually give us a much larger space for circulation. The firehouse, we found out we can use the firehouse for our morning programs during the week, the circle time and the Spanish circle time that take up so much parking here, but we could use those rooms without cost. The azalea room, we could use for class visits during the school, during the school day, where they would not be likely to interfere with, they wouldn't be unlikely to interfere with activities. They already have planned there. The community, other spaces in the community center and Hefner could be available, some of the time at least, working the schedule out with the recreation department, for the evening, weekend programs as much as possible. And then, staff, library staff would go in the atrium room, some of them, and a couple of staff probably in JNA School if we were able to use it. So, that's kind of where we are in our deliberations on relocation. You know, we really don't know. Meanwhile, the Luke Meyer Partnership has joined with an architectural firm in Chesapeake, Virginia. There now are our MM Luke Meyer architects. That doesn't change a great deal for us. We still plan on working with them. We're still talking with them. And they have submitted a detailed fee proposal for professional services from design through construction administration. And these would include architectural design, structural engineering, mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineering, civil engineering, interior design, cost estimating, and geotechnical engineering. But the city, the city's acceptance of that proposal is pending review by a construction attorney and the city attorney. So, in terms of cost, you know, I can go over some of the costs that we know to an extent, but there are many costs that we don't yet know. So, there's a, those are really estimates in the current proposed budget.
And right now, there's two things that are, that we're kind of on the hook for doing. One is to finalize the naming of a construction attorney. In the past, we had one that worked on the second part of the community center, certainly with the auditorium renovation and the public works, work. And this construction attorney is an essential part of the process. First of all, would go through and just even approve the final contract with the Luke Meyer Group, but also would be doing all of the review of the bid documents, text, and the contract with the construction firm, that kind of thing. It's well worth the money to have that expertise. The other thing that we are on the hook to get is a construction project manager. And again, for the second part of the community center project, auditorium and the public works facility, we hired a person who reviewed all the specs, knows construction inside and out, coordinates with the architect, that also has an oversight role of construction, is particularly useful for change order review and invoice review. Again, the money is well worth it. It saves us in the long run and it means that we don't have surprises in the same way, construction surprises that we've had. One of the things that, every once in a while, I see little comments on listservs about, well, how are we going to know what the price is going to be of this project and, and, you know, are we, do we have the capacity as staff to oversee it? And actually, we don't. That's why we hire these folks. The, their attention is, gives us confidence as a city that it's managed well. We actually are very pleased with Luke Meyer as an architect. I think he's got quite a good, quite, quite a good history and he's been very helpful so far. But as we go through this process, I think that you all will find that you will be much more comfortable when you see the kind of review that these two players in the process, what their role is and, and the outcome of that. In terms of the estimates of the project, we're in the kind of 7.7 million to $8 million when it's, when all's told. What we're looking at too, though, is some opportunities to do a few changes right around the rec department. And so, we'll be going back and talking a little bit about that. Some of that can be phased in, some of that can be handled with money from our cable grant, some of it can be handled with our facilities maintenance reserve over time. And so, part of this is that we'll be kind of coming up with some schedules of those, but we don't know the price until it goes out to bid. And that's, that's the same thing with the street projects and everything else. I think we've got good estimates. We've, one of the persons that Luke Meyer did go through was a cost estimator even of the information that we have so far. So, we have, I think, pretty good estimates. I also appreciate that we have the relocation committee that's really looking at a low-budget way to function as a library and the programming during this time. When we go through the budget for the departments, you'll also see that the recreation department has reduced some of the revenue expenditures that it's expecting because of greater use by the city of some of the space in this building. So, they, you know, we're trying to be very accurate about our expectations during the time period, and you'll see those expectations. And it's been nice that everybody's kind of been working on that together to determine how that works. We're, I, you know, the other thing that's nice is that people really love the plans. They like the design. But what we don't have yet, and what we needed, the site investigation work done, is we don't have the landscape design, that kind of exterior site design. And I think that's the one area where the public still is kind of wondering, kind of interested. And so, once we have our contract attorney on, on, construction attorney on board, get the contract finalized for this next, next activities by the Luke Meyer Group, that landscape site plan concept will come out and be available for public comment.
So, is Luke Meyer going to be your landscape architect? Are we hiring someone else?
Well, there's, I think there's some, I think he had some contract recommendations for that, but it's, this is more kind of the general flow, like where's the circulation go around the building? That's what people ask about. I mean, they still like, well, what about, why do I always have to climb over the wall? So, so part of this is to not have the sense of a barrier someplace, but have it be welcoming and to see how you enter in the facility and have it be a welcoming design that also works for encouraging appropriate use outside and discouraging inappropriate use and all of those kinds of things.
Okay.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, before we sort of get into detailed questions, one of the things that I, I want us to, city council and your, and city staff to think about is, is maybe relabeling this project because in truth, you know, the, the price has gone up since, since we first started talking about it and thought we, you know, where we were, say, in a year and a half, two years ago. But, and the reason largely for that is the fact that this whole project has gotten to be larger than the library itself, because we're really repurposing in this thing a large piece of the community center, the, the ground floor of the community center, which is the, the community part of the community center. It's not the basement and it's not the administrative offices upstairs. And, and, and we're going to be making use of a lot of space that now is just virtually non-functional in, inside, plus some outdoor space.
Right.
That's just also kind of like painfully obvious that it's not, it's, it could, it could be used. And so, we're going to be achieving operational efficiencies and space efficiencies that I think will, that will help residents understand the, the, the true nature of, of this project. And as long as we keep sort of just talking about the library.
Right.
Which of course is the, is the, the main purpose of the whole thing. We're not really giving due justice.
Well, that's true. The other thing that I just want to mention is that different numbers are used for different purposes. And the actual construction part is still in the $5 million range. So, when people hear 7 million or 7.7, it starts to get really scary, but it's because we're talking about relocation and we're talking about some of these other aspects of things that, that we referred to before, but it wasn't the number that was said out loud. And so, I, the, there's really... There's really... It's not been that much expansion in terms of money. It's just... It's important for me to think of all the costs as we look at what we need to borrow and what we need to plan for over time. And so, one of the things that, well, I think is available now on the website, but it's clear, is some of the different cost elements and what they're associated with. But you're right, it is a wonderful expansion of the community center.
Yeah, it's just gonna make much of the community center much more usable by everybody, not just staff.
Oh, yeah. No, it's actually... Most of the benefits are to the public.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Just a few questions. I think we had talked earlier about getting the breakdown for the different bond terms, and that's still something you'll be providing separately, I guess. Is that right? The 15 versus the 30 and so on?
Right, yes. We had... I'm sorry, I had some of that at the open house. Right, we went through and...
I think I missed it at the open house, so sorry about that.
That's okay. We'll make sure that it gets out. What we have asked is that the representatives for the Maryland Infrastructure Loan Program run various options. And I will say that in talking with Susan Chung, the Finance Director, it really was her recommendation that we go for the longer amount, the 30-year amount for the $7 million bond for the library. And this has to do with the amount of money that you have to pay every year.
Right.
And so, part of that is that balancing about what's the tax rate versus, you know, as we heard from one of the residents, you know, "Well, how much interest are we paying and do we want to do that?" Either answer works. There's arguments on different sides about the length of the bond, but I think that if you're... I wouldn't go shorter than 20 years, and the 30-year number, as you really look at these various options, seems to make quite a lot of sense.
Well, I mean, it strikes me, and I know it's not exactly the same as a mortgage because you're talking about using tax money, which we don't... We're required to pay, but if one of the goals as we go through the budget now, and a lot of people talked about it tonight, is to hold down any annual tax increase to the extent possible, it is a trade-off.
It is.
Because if you do that and spread it out over time, if it was something, if it was a facility that has short lifespan, I would feel bad about doing that. But this is something which, as far as we know, future generations, not to be dramatic about it, will be using this. So asking people 27 years from now to pay for something that they'll be using 40 years from now strikes me as more reasonable than if we were to, you know, pave the street and spread that out over time. So even though, to me, there is... Yes, there is a greater expenditure, the more number of years you do, each year is much more affordable for the city.
Right, and as we go through the bonding, I think the other part is just, you know, I'm not looking at just next year. It's, you know, how much bond money and interest and whatever, as we go through different, you know, the 10, 15, 30 years and what that means and what... You hate to have a situation where all of a sudden you have a large amount that you have to pay that you've not been paying, because then it's a sudden tax increase or it's big cuts. And so, trying to make sure that as we look at it, we also look at something that's fairly stable over time that's useful.
Well, I think you did say when we talked about this the last time that, and we can look at this in more detail later if we need to, but that the guidelines in our charter for the type of... The percentage of the various ways of measuring the city's wealth, that this would fall under or all below, at or below those guidelines, right?
Yes, very much, very much below. We're not close to a limit.
Right, right. One other question, and I appreciate the information about the transition question. Do we know how long the construction would last?
12 to 15 months of hard construction.
Okay.
But we still have to do detailed design development, so we're talking... We probably wouldn't start that for another year.
Right, but so in other words, once the time comes to shift the materials wherever they're going to, whether it's to the school or to a trailer or all those things, that's about a year-long process that...
Well, we have a year in which to do it, let's put it that way.
But then...
Then we would be out of the location for about a year and a half.
A year and a half, probably, right? Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Meil, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, great. See, I had a couple, or some comments maybe. Regarding the relocation plans, are we... Given the heavy use of the library after school and the game room, are we also looking at other places where young people can be during this year, year and a half?
Yes, yeah, that's been part of the discussion, because if we end up using the... There's a lot that is of merit to using the game room for library purposes during this time period, just kind of the location of it, but we would try to find another good place to play. And so, that might be a trailer where we've got something, or it might be some other arrangement. Certainly, the rec department wants to make sure that we're thinking about that very carefully.
But the game room also does not have classes, and that's, I think, one reason why the rec department had, I mean, with some reluctance, thought they could do without it for a while.
Mm-hmm. Great. Terrific. I don't know if I have any other questions at this time. I just want to say a couple of thank-yous. Thank you Ellen and everyone who's worked on this, and particularly, I want to do a shout-out to, I guess he's not so new anymore, our media specialist, is that his retitle? Oh, it is, okay, good, who put together the packet.
He's wonderful. Jeremy is great.
He is terrific. He also did the pull-out in our newsletter of our council priorities, and I just want to thank him, thank Councilmember Kovar for doing the testimony for our bond bill on this.
Right, and I don't think it was mentioned, we did get $150,000 from the state, and that's more than two of the libraries got in Montgomery County, which were for $100,000, so.
Right, and I just want to say thank you to everyone of the residents and members of this city council who worked really, really hard to get that bond bill and make sure we get it, and to thank our delegation in Annapolis. Not my bad! I just do one more thank you. You're like the music in the Oscars. One more thank you. I just wanted to take this moment to thank my colleagues, thank Councilmember Kovar and Koreshi, who did have us take a slight pause last year when they joined the council to have us look at this project one more time. I think it has very much benefited from that second look, and as Councilmember Schultz said, to really think about how this renovation expansion also will feed into the community center. So I just want to say thank you again for that. Councilmember Schultz?
It's her fault. She got me laughing. I can't stop. We've got the bond bill. Is there any possible other sources that the staff might be looking at for grant support?
Well, we certainly would like to get another bond bill, you know, and add to that. We're somewhat limited on some of the grants that are available to some libraries. We certainly are looking at, as I mentioned before, using our cable monies, our capital cable monies, because many of the aspects of this facility have AV connectors.
Oh, yeah, I would think.
And so, you know, we've got... We've got almost $4 million sitting in that account. The more that we can have that offset the costs of this project, the better.
Why don't we just rename the library the Computer Center, the Cable TV Center?
There you go. We'll come up with something good. But, you know, if... We'll keep our eyes open for grants. If you see anything, let us know. We certainly would want to pursue those kinds of funds.
Councilmember Stevens?
I know that it's different from the library, but it still is construction at the community center, and that is the filling in of the floor to give additional space in the police department.
Right.
And to give better community space on this floor. I wonder if that can be tied into this project, or it would make sense to tie it into this project? Or if in fact...
I'll tell you, I might be able to do it in that way. There has been discussion about how do we use some of the area in front of the, kind of, the police department for some of the space, but...
In fact, if that was the first phase of this construction, you would have space to use for library.
Right, so it certainly has been talked about. We don't have that figured out yet.
Please keep it in mind.
I know. I would love to. I would love to have that done.
All right. Then I think with that, we will adjourn for this evening, and we'll be back Monday night to look at the capital budget.
That's right.
So, thank you, everyone, and...
Carter? Thank you.